One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the roll call.
Press the button. I think you have to press the button.
Now you may talk. It's red.
Before we do the roll call. We're gonna all get used to the microphones, so let me just explain it to you. First of all, the reason you need to have it explained is only four mics will work at any one time. So as Mr. Basil calls the roll, you're gonna have to like anticipate your name and push the button to turn it on, like I didn't do when we started the meeting. Same way with the public himself. Mrs. Torsia and I have the special button on our mics so we can shut them all off. But it's just a matter of getting used to anticipating, pushing the button, and seeing the red light come on. And that way we'll all be able to hear each other. Any questions about the mics? Thank you. You have to hit the button again to turn it off. If you forget, we can do it. With that, Mr. Basil, would you call the roll, please?
When it's red, it's on.
Mr. Basil here, Mrs. Bates?
Here.
Mr. Doty? Mr. Kurtz? Mr. Rathgill?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Speed?
I wasn't listening. I'm sorry. I'm here.
Ms. Trudowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here.
Under announcements, I just want to let everybody know I was in contact with Mr. Kurtz today. He intended to be here tonight, but he's sick. And Mr. Doty has a work-related function, so he couldn't attend either. Under agenda edits, under number 10, building and grounds, please add letter A. There'd be a reserve study, a brief reserve study update by Mr. Small. Under number 12, personnel approvals, change C1 to administration. And we'll be adding Casey Blankenbiller as building and ground supervisor. And then all these subcategories will change. Professional will become 2, extracurricular 3, substitute staff 4, and volunteers 5.
Could you repeat that one more time? Number 12?
Yeah, number 12, we're changing, we're adding a C1 will become administration, which will be C1A, as Casey Blankenbiller will be building and ground supervisor, working under the district office at $78,000 per year, effective September 23rd, replacing Ken Smith. And then the subcategories under item 12 will just change. Professional will become 2, extracurricular will become 3, substitute staff 4, and volunteers 5. Under number 13, program approvals, we're adding a letter B, which would be a motion to approve an agreement between BCTC and the district for nursing services. And adding a letter C would be a motion to approve an E-signature for grant applications for the resolutions submitted by the district solicitor. Both of those will be explained before we vote on them. Any other agenda edits?
Concerning 8A, do you need to pull that out separately? Is that part of the consent agenda?
Okay, 8A will be separate, not part of the consent agenda. Any other agenda edits? Procedures for public participation on the inside of Blue Clover. I would suggest, because the microphone may take a second to come on, push the button for the microphone, then write your name, so it can warm up while you're signing in. And then state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. If anyone did not sign in, come into the meeting, please, or say form in the back for your signature. Number 7, recognition for September, Mrs. Torsia.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martino. Tonight, I would like to recognize some of our TSA members. And per Mrs. Stacy Hallman, the director of the TSA group, she shared with me that this past June, the Daniel Boone TSA chapters competed at the TSA National Conference in Washington DC, with over 6,800 attenders and around 5,000 competitors. Our students had their work cut out for them. Many students were competing with over 150 other students in one event. The events are judged, and the top 12 semifinalists were listed, and then they go into a finalist round, where they complete an interview or an outside activity under time constraints. Tracy, or I'm sorry, Stacy reports that she is very proud of the students and what they accomplished at this conference. Each student showed dignity, compassion, strength, cooperation, and teamwork. And they were very excited to be able to compete at the national level again. And next year, it's in Dallas, Texas. So tonight, I would like to recognize the following students. And I know that not everyone is here, so right off the top, first, or the first student that I'd like to recognize was the second-place winner, Jordan Markle, for communication challenge. Is Jordan here?
She's not here.
Okay. Sixth-place winners were Lily Kurtz and Emily Conchen. Are they here? Okay. Emily? Do you want to join me? And that was for water infrastructure.
Emily, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Emily.
Glad you had a good time. Next, our 11th-place winners for STEM animation are Eddie Barnett. Go ahead. More than Eddie. Justin Semmer. And Justin Pfeifer. And I'm not sure if Jake Brendel is here, but he was also... Jake Brendel also was part of that group.
Justin?
Good job, Piddle. Congratulations to those students. And I also have one other announcement that I would like to make. And that was, that is to congratulate, congratulations to Savannah Toth for making second-team All-State Honors for the 2014 softball season, and Becca Slattery for earning first-team All-State Honors and co-player of the year for the state of Pennsylvania. So those are some acolytes from the softball season, so congratulations to them. And that concludes my recognition at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Torsia. I was so intent on telling everybody about the microphones, I forgot to ask, are there any presentations by the public on any of the agenda items? Saying none, now move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Sewers, I have a question. Dr. Sankar had written out what Mr. Basil's been reading, that we'll now have a unanimous roll call vote. It's not really a roll call vote, is that correct? It's, it's, shouldn't it be just by unanimous consent without objection?
I think it would be appropriate to revise it to re... I think it would be appropriate to revise this line, which should be, there will be a unanimous vote of approval, unless I hear votes in the contrary, and a motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Sewers.
And I'm just marking this up for Mr. Basil.
8A was removed from the consent agenda. Do you want to address that now?
Yeah, absolutely. I've forwarded around to the board some additions to the agenda, or additions to the minutes of August 11th, 2014. I didn't have any issues with the August 25th voting of the minutes. I wasn't even at that meeting. But the August 11th minutes, I sent around two copies. One, which was the original minutes. We can actually talk about this in two parts. So one is a larger discussion about mics in general, and the first is about these minutes specifically. So I sent around two word documents to the board. One of those has, it's titled "A/B edits", which has the agenda, or the minutes that they provided to the board president and myself, with some of the edits that I put in there, others that are highlighted in red and yellow are not included in the minutes that were in front of you tonight that I thought were pertinent and should be included. And I'm happy to discuss the reasons for that if people have questions. If there are no questions, then I request that we approve the minutes as I provided them to you.
Where were they?
I emailed them to the board. What's that?
She's not talking right now.
I did not see them on the email.
Today. When I saw the minutes, when I saw the package for the meeting today.
I'm sorry, I didn't see them.
I'm happy to go through them one by one, unless other board members have other questions.
I don't have an objection to your edits. The board wants to discuss them next morning, but I mean, I'm willing to second your motion to approve them with the edits. They were your edits. And they were things that, I don't think there was anything else that anybody else said, so...
I have no objection. I have some things that I want to say, but did you want to explain them to Mrs. Bates first?
Sure. So some of the additions to the minutes discussed, I listened to the meeting on tape. And so I included the things that I thought were important, that I was asking questions on. And I believe that they warranted being in the minutes because we spent some time talking about it as a board. And one of the issues was, we were talking about enrollment, and whether we should be scaling back on staffing at this point in time or not, to which we had a response from Mrs. Torsia that we should not. That's a question that's brought up every year. I think it's pertinent. I think it's germane to when we're analyzing whether our projections are above or below enrollment on any given year. So I thought that should be included. We discussed the issues of facilities use, and how are there some discrepancies, and how that was being handled. There were some questions about where the bottleneck was, and I had suggested, as I had once before, that we ought to be using an online system for probably handling that. And the IT director agreed that was a good way to go. Partly the IT director said it was a good way to go, it was there, but the whole discussion about what we were discussing wasn't included. So everything else was out of context. So I thought that was germane to the conversation as well, and needed to be included. We talked about having an audit of the building, the different buildings, and the whether or not all of our contracts have been reviewed recently. And who was monitoring that, who was aware of those things, who was monitoring those things. So I thought that needed to be included as well. And I think that's it.
They sound fine to me.
All right, let me tell you my objections. And just so you understand, Mrs. Kramer did not, not put your edits in. I didn't agree with him, so she tried to like split hairs and try and accommodate both of us. Because my understanding is the board president and secretary are supposed to agree on the minutes. I don't agree. Our policy states the minutes should be comprehensible and complete, and show the date, place, and time of the meeting, the names of the members present, the presiding officer, the substance of all official actions, the actions taken, the recorded votes, and a record by individual member of all roll call votes taken, and the names of residents or taxpayers who appeared officially and the subject of the testimony. This says nothing about conversations that took place. If I remember correctly, because I don't have that initial email of yours in front of me, you said, "You don't have time to be going back through all the recordings." Well, how can eight other members be expected to vote on what you claim you said unless they all go back and listen to the recordings? I'm not going to. And that was my objection months ago, with quotes in here that Basil said, Basil asked, Basil suggested. I don't know that you did that. So you're asking us to vote on something other people said that's not required by the minutes? I don't know if you said them or not. The second thing is, six of us went to training together. And we were repeatedly told that we act as a board, not as individuals. So what any one individual said or thinks really doesn't matter. It's the vote that matters. And I'll give you an example. I did not think the administration should move to this building. I voted against the administration moving to this building. And I still don't think the administration should have moved to this building. But the vote was that they move here. That's the end of the discussion. Whether I agree with it, or what I said, or what I didn't say, doesn't matter. So again, without each board member listening to the tape, taking notes, nobody here, I defy anybody here to truthfully say they remember that you said this, or I said that, or Mrs. Torsia said the other thing. It's easy to remember that a motion was made, and the vote was 5-4, or 6-3, or 7-2. In your email, you say that lack of accountability, or rather, let me back up. Censoring the rationale is the reason this district got itself into the mess it did with construction projects. And I don't agree with that. The reason this district got in trouble was spending money they didn't have on projects they didn't need. That's how they got in trouble, not not having the rationale in the minutes. And the last thing you wrote, that absence of detail affords lack of accountability. I've got to ask, I'm going to give you three projects. We had a football stadium boondoggle with a million and a half dollar overrun. I don't know that anybody was held accountable for that. We had $9 million spent on this building, only to find out we didn't need this building. I don't know anybody who was held accountable for that. And you've repeatedly publicly stated that we have an unsustainable, unaffordable contract with our teachers. And I don't know that anybody's held accountable for that. So what difference does it make who said what or didn't say what, other than the vote that was taken? That's my objection to the minutes, to your edits, rather.
And I just like to say, in reference of the two, at two of the three highlighted sections that Mr. Basil talked about, it doesn't make sense, as written, if you don't have what it has. I don't care if it says Mr. Basil said, I don't care if it says a board member said. Whether, I mean, that's the man's, honestly, but for example, it says discrepancies in how procedure was being implemented, and those processes cumbersome. IT director agreed this was a good way to go. What's a good way to go? Without it saying in there about the online form, what's the good way to go? So they don't, some of them don't make sense without the specific questions being asked. And I think the accountability portion is what happens on Election Day. I don't think any of those people sitting here, that signed any of those contracts, are sitting here. Whether or not they were elected, not re-elected, or they chose not to run, that's the public's time for accountability.
Well, I think we need to decide as a board if we're going to have more information or less. I mean, because what Mr. Basil put in there is consistent with what the passports, and I don't say that to, to discipline the way we should be doing it going forward. But if we are going to have a public record of what was discussed and things that were pandered back and forth amongst the board, then the detail that is provided is important, because it does give you context. If we're going to go by the policy, and if that's the way we want to go, where it's, you know, the facts of how the meeting went forward, yeah, that's fine, too. If that's what the board wants to do with our policy. I think so, I don't know if there is enough information in the minutes to make, have it make sense, to your point, Ms. Trudowski. But if, I guess I'm back to my original comment, we either need more information or less. Decide which way we're going to go.
I think the board needs to ask itself this question. What is the purpose of the minutes? It's a record of the event. And basically republishing the agenda with what the votes are, I don't think does the public justice, or future boards, or this board justice, quite frankly. I sit on lots of different boards. We're constantly referring to the minutes of the past to see what decisions were made, why were they made, because we may be revisiting the same issue over again. It's nice to understand what the arguments were for or against a particular vote on a particular issue, or understanding why we ended up where we did. And I will say that when I was here, when the minutes reflected essentially the agenda, and there are board members that were making statements that were untrue. They were making statements that were untrue about assumptions that were being made. They were making statements that were untrue about the numbers. And they were not held to accountability, because those weren't recorded in the minutes. And then later, when they were pressed by the public, you said this, or you know, you stated that. No, I didn't. I never said that. There's no accountability there. And I don't know what the purpose the minutes serve the public. If you're not here for a meeting to understand what happened and what transpired. I think if the board is willing to spend 20 or 30 minutes discussing an issue, it warrants being in the minutes for the public's benefit. And I'll tell you, you know, I've been in court where the minutes have been essential in defining a case. Because certain representations were being made by the people that were sitting there, and they were held to that standard in a court of law. So minutes do have weight, they do have meaning. And I think it's important that those things are reflected here. And what was quoted in our policy is the bare minimum that's required by the state in terms of the sunshine law. And a key word that was glossed over there is substantive, okay? Substantive information. I consider substantive information to be the context of a discussion on an important issue. I think that's substantive, and I think it needs to be included in the minutes. That's where I am on the issue. And if we have to go through this every single time, I don't think, it's, if I have to, I will go and listen to the minutes after every single meeting, and I'll put in there the information I think is important. I'll bring it in front of the board to vote on it. And it'll be a board decision every single time. I don't think I should have to do that, after sitting in a meeting for three or four hours, to go back six weeks later, when I get the copy of the minutes, to go and listen to them again for three or four hours.
May I ask, Miss Slattery, for Mr. Sewers? The fact that it says that the president and secretary agree on the minutes, is that the board's policy?
That is a matter of board policy. That's not in the sunshine law, it's not in the school code. The school code does provide that one of the duties of the secretary is to keep a correct and proper record of all the proceedings of the board. You know, public, these public meetings would fall within that category. And then Mr. Basil correctly cited the fact that, under the sunshine law, those four specific items identified in your policy are the minimum requirements under the sunshine act to be contained in board minutes. Anything beyond that would be per the board's discretion.
Well, I guess I was looking, I mean, I'm used to the secretary, whatever board, doing the minutes, and then it's up to the board to say whether or not they want to. So from my opinion, if Mr. Sewers is the secretary, and he wants certain things in there, I think it's for the board to say they're not. If we don't like how he keeps the minutes, we have the ability to change the secretary or ask him to step down. If the board's policy is that the two of them have to agree, and they don't, then maybe both persons go out to the whole board, and then the board makes a decision as to how they want to edit it. I don't know that either one of them, if the policy states that they have to agree, then I don't think it's any more fair, sorry, Mr. Martino, for yours to go out than his to go out. Because he didn't agree with yours, and you didn't agree with his. So then, do they both go out? I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but if you can't get two people to agree, who takes weight? And to me, it'd be the secretary, because he's, that he or she is responsible for the minutes.
Let me just say two quick things. One, to Mr. Wolf's point about the policy, if these aren't just the minimums, and we're going to have more, then we need to change the policy. And two, back to your point, Ms. Trudowski, I don't put out minutes. The minutes that were provided were by Mrs. Kramer. I do not go back and listen to the tape for three or four hours and sit there and make notes.
As asked, would, you know... When I was the board president, and Mr. McCullar, Mrs. Fissette, was the board secretary, board secretary would put out the minutes. We would review them collaboratively, decide what was going in, what was going out. And, you know, I would put more information in, that's just my nature. I like to have more detail there for the benefit of the public and for the board. Sometimes we would disagree, and we would, we would basically underline what was, what we disagreed on, and put it in there, and let the board decide whether it should stay or go. I specifically remember an issue where Connor Kurtz wanted certain things put in the minutes that he had said specifically. And there was a disagreement between myself and the board secretary at the time, and we put them in, and the board voted to include them. I think it's difficult for the board to vote on something that's not there. You don't know what you're not voting on. So it's easier to have it in, say it should be out, than to wonder what should be in there later on.
I tend to agree. My feeling is that the onus is on all of us to review these minutes and add substance. I believe one of the components, you said, Mr. Martino, was that the purpose of the minutes is to provide substance. And if any of us remember a part that wasn't substantially described in the minutes, I think it's on all of us to submit our recommendation for an edit to the agenda also. That should be included. And, yeah, I do think that if we have a 15, 20-minute discussion, or a 10-minute discussion, it's worthy of a little bit extra meditation. I also think if we're going to go with the policy as it stands, and we're just going to include what's required by the sunshine act, then I think we do that for everything. I don't, I don't think we pick and choose what we put more information on. If all we're going to include is the date, time, place, and roll call votes, then that's all that goes in for everything. Unless the board agrees as a whole to add something else. I don't, I don't think it's fair to pick and choose what we're going to add more info on. So I think if we're going to say we're only doing the policy, then we should only do the policy for everything in the minutes. That's my two cents.
I think it's going to go back. Going to go back to, you know, discussion we first had two years ago, which, what are the official minutes? You know, what we put in the written form versus the recorded form? Clearly, there's more data or more information on the, on the audio recordings. However, until we have this system, I can tell you, as a member of public, it was almost impossible to understand some of the things that were said, depending on who was talking at the time. So I don't know, maybe we start looking at our audio recording as being our actual minutes? I don't know. Is that the way to go?
Just something for the public to understand, and possibly for all the board members, these microphones are tied right into the recording. So everything that's being said through the microphone is recorded. Other comments or questions about item 8A? Is there a motion to approve item 8A?
I'll make a motion to approve 8A, as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Basil, second by Ms. Trudowski. Mr. Basil? Can you call the roll, please?
Any more comments?
Any more, unless I already had comments and questions.
Which minutes are you amending these?
The ones that I submitted to the board, the complete set of minutes that I submitted to the board, that I just read out the additions to.
What's the date?
Yeah, it's the August 11th minutes.
My understanding, the motion is to approve all the amendments as presented with the August 11th minutes as amended by Mr. Basil. Sounds like that?
That's correct. Mr. Basil, yes? Mrs. Bates?
Yes.
Mr. Doty? I'm sorry, he's absent. Mr. Kurtz, absent. Mr. Rathgill?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Trudowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
No.
Motion passes, seven more.
Six more.
Thank you for that.
All right, moving on to the... All right, moving on to the actual consent agenda, items 8B through E.
Motion for B through E, 8B through E.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Dowski. Comments, questions from the board? Hearing none, Mr. Basil?
This will be unanimous vote for approval unless I hear votes of the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item nine, presentations by board members. Secretaries' correspondence, is there any?
I guess the only, I don't have anything here in front of me, but I see later in the agenda, we have a discussion about the PASBA elections. I had shared with board the email that had come through to the board secretary about electing representation and there seemed to be some confusion on that. I hadn't seen anything else from PASBA to clarify that, so I'm just making notation here for the benefit of the public and things that that's been going on. And I believe we haven't another couple of weeks yet to get the final votes in. There's a period of 30 days that was open for voting.
VCIU report?
Yes, Mr. Martino, we did have our meeting last week. Besides the regular type agenda items, we did accept the resignation of Dr. George and we did appoint Dr. Hackett as the new director for the VCIU. We also just wanted to kind of check with administration, so is anyone going to the October 2nd seminar on the prescription drugs that are used in our schools that is open to folks from our school?
At this time, I'm not, at this time, I'm not aware of anyone attending.
Okay.
I haven't seen that one come through my email as of yet, but if any, I will check into it.
We'll be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
And we also did, we did approve our election representatives for, at the PSBA meeting as well, so that was pretty much it. Any questions?
No, thank you, Mr. Rathke. I believe Mr. Dode is the VCTC.
He attended the August meeting, as I complained. I just saw a couple of things. They did sell the student-built house, they approved the sale of that at a price of $290,000 and that was really the main thing. Everything else was routine approvals. So, and then we meet again this coming Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Dowski. Legislative report, I have a few things here. Early last week, the Senate Finance Committee voted Senate Bill 76, the Property Tax Independence Act, out of committee. But before anyone gets too excited, the bill now goes to the Senate Appropriations Committee. After being debated and possibly amended and voted on there, then it would go to the full Senate. There are less than 10 days left in the session for the Senate this year and any bill that is not enacted into law dies and would have to be reintroduced in January, starting from scratch with new cosponsors and new amendments and everything else. So this doesn't look like it's going anywhere, at least not this year, and it's going to start all over again. Couple of things there is, and this is legislative and I understand, please, I am not endorsing any candidates, I'm just trying to give you a perspective on property taxes as they affect the school district. You have a gubernatorial race in November. The incumbent this year realizes what we've known for years, that there's a pension crisis. Problem is, his plan would not impact pensions for 15 or 20 years. His opponent says there is no pension crisis. So neither one of those are going to help property taxes. In the House race, the incumbent is a cosponsor of House Bill 76, which again will die, but has not done a lot to educate the public or get it enacted. His challenger doesn't believe in House Bill 76 and would like to eliminate property taxes for residents, but not businesses, which unfortunately violates the Constitution and would take a constitutional amendment to change. So you'd be looking at property tax relief if that took place six, eight, 10 years from now. So the bottom line is, school property taxes are going to be a burden for school boards for the foreseeable future. Are there any other board reports?
I'm just making a announcement. Finance Committee meets Friday, Thursday at 6:30 here.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. Building and grounds, Mr. Small is going to give a brief overview of the reserve study that was completed.
I have before me, as promised, the final report from the Reserve Consultants, all 334 pages, anybody chooses to review it. I have requested additional copies for each board member so that you would, well, we have it electronically. Trust me, it's tough to navigate around electronically, you'd do best if you had it. We will be introducing it at the Facilities Committee on the 23rd of October, I believe it's.
13th.
13th, 13th of October. So we'll introduce it then, but it is available if anyone wants to review it. A lot of detail here.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
We had discussed, trying to get this in front of Ken Smith, and I know Ken Smith is no longer working for us, I'm just wondering whether the board would have any objections to getting a copy of this to him to see if he wouldn't mind reviewing it, just to see if he has some thoughts on it, it is a draft version. I haven't seen it, but I'm sure Ken might have some, some insights to this.
Has, has he, was he at the exit conference or no, he was not there?
At the exit conference, he was, he was with the team during the entire review and I think he had his own exit conference on site at one of the buildings and then had to leave. And then they committed the exit conference, really didn't have a lot of substance to it. But to my knowledge, he did not review this after it arrived because he was on vacation and then he left.
I guess the question is, how would he review a 300-page document?
I guess we could send him the electronic version of it. I guess we could send the electronic version of it. All right, the electronic version could go to Ken?
I would think so.
I can't guarantee you that he'll sit down and read all 364 pages of it, but it's something that I could ask him to skim over and see if he sees anything that's blaming. That should be brought to our attention.
A lot of these documents, I understand many people may not have reviewed these before, I see these things all the time, a lot of them is explanations of what the system is. So if someone's trying to explain how a chiller works, you're going to read 20 pages of here. Ken Smith understands how a chiller works, so he's going to skip right to the diagnostic of useful life or whatever it is that they, so he's not going to read all 334 pages and I can assure you of that, yeah. But I would ask, can't hurt to ask.
I will certainly ask.
Thank you.
Andrew, what are you thinking? What would be obtained from Ken, Mr. Smith, reviewing?
It's just been my experience that sometimes you're bringing an outside organization in to evaluate your building systems and your properties, wherever they may be, and although you're doing your best to communicate with the engineers or engineer at the time of what is happening, it may not necessarily translate into the report that you're receiving. And so sometimes they'll forget things or they will mislabel something one way or the other, where they may not have the appropriate information as it pertains to warranty or purchase date or a cost, particularly the costs, you know, those are some major assumptions that are going on there. And Mr. Smith may have some more relevant information that he could add or make a correction if he sees an error. Anybody sitting around here is not going to be able to read that report until there's an error in there. And our new, I highly doubt our new, what would the new position, the new individual would be who occupies that seat, but Mr. Smith would be able to make the same evaluation, so.
So accuracy and oversight, is that what we're looking for?
Yeah, he just may pick up on a couple of things that we should be aware of.
Other comments, questions?
Can I just add something else to Buildings and Grounds, please?
Go ahead.
We did have the insurance adjuster come out to evaluate all of the buildings with regard to any hail damage that may have occurred in the spring, and this is the third time that Kenny went out and he also had someone else out to look with regards to equipment, but everything comes out clear, we have no problems. So I just wanted to let you know that we are good.
Thank you, Mrs. Torsa. Moving on to financial approvals. Item 11A is a motion to approve the attached course of credit request for tuition reimbursement, salary step.
Can I make a motion to table that? Is that on?
I don't think so.
Now it sounds. Can I make a motion to table that? I thought we had some questions pertaining to some of those issues that we could need to discuss in Xavier's session.
Yeah, most of this is compliant to collective bargaining agreement with regard to the salary step move and our advanced placement. That part you wouldn't be able to, as it refers to the teachers, Brian, but you can...
I thought it was about the amounts, that there was a typing error?
That we adjusted and we did correct one of them that was an overage, which should not have been, and that was taken care of. But I know that your question is, I mean, that's never vision in your packet, but I know that your question was personnel matter.
Right.
So...
I mean, I have no problem making a motion to exclude that one issue, I just want to discuss it with the board first, so we're all on the same page with the solicitor.
Do we adjourn for a moment and then come back?
Before recess?
Right. That's what I would go to the library.
I just made a motion to recess.
Second. Congress questions?